It's now seven thirty-three. I call the meeting of the Board of Appeals to order. We have a couple of matters on for this evening, but before we do that, we have to read this. Pursuit to Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, this meeting will be conducted in person and as a courtesy via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public and board members, the hearings will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless required by law. This meeting will be recorded by the Local Scene, which used to be PAC TV. Members who wish, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so by viewing the Duxbury government access channels. Viewers can visit thelocalscene.media backslash Duxbury for more information on Duxbury programming and watching replays on YouTube. All right, so the first matter we have on for tonight is ZBA case number 2025 dash zero four. The applicants proposed to rebuild a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling on an open pile foundation. The pre-existing dwelling was destroyed by fire on August 20, 2024. And that's 30 Bay Avenue. This is the first hearing on this, so let's review the correspondence. We have an application. We have a site plan and a series of architectural drawings. In terms of correspondence, the planning board voted unanimously to defer judgment to this board, and the health agent indicates that this is connected to the Marshfield Septic Treatment Plan, and therefore the Board of Health has no comments. Anything else?
Yes, we did receive a letter from the Design Review Board, date of May 19th, that states the applicants proposed to rebuild a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling on an open pile foundation. The previous pre-existing non-conforming dwelling was destroyed by fire on August 20th, 2024. The Design Review Board met to review the application. They talk about what was included in the packet. The board informed the applicant that the floor plans are required as part of a special permit application, and they are an essential part of the review process. The homeowner went to his car and brought back floor plans to show to the board, but no floor plans were given to the board. The Design Review Board noted that the design for the new structure lacked the charm of the previous structure pictured in the submitted photo, which was a two, two-and-a-half-story structure with a third-floor dormer and a wraparound partially enclosed porch. The homeowner said that the photo did not represent the most recent configuration of the home before it was destroyed by fire, and that there had been modifications made to increase the living space. Although the proposed structure will sit on the same footprint as the previous one, the mass is significantly bulkier, the proposed design has a gambrel roof with a gable on the wider side of the house, creating unusual proportions and making the house look more massive. With a full three-story facade across the width of the front of the house, it is large, it has a large boxy appearance. The rear portion of the house has a three-story space with a roof that does not relate to the adjacent roof, and the midpoint is above 30 feet. The design could be improved by further study of roof forms, dormers, and window placements that better relate to the roofs. The proposed materials are cedar shingles painted a light color that will match the existing garage and architecture asphalt roof shingles. These materials are appropriate and will be compatible with the neighborhood. The Design Review Board does not object to the proposal moving forward. However, we would recommend further design study and submission of floor plans with revised drawings respectfully submitted, Nancy Johnson, for the Design Review Board.
All right, I omitted the fact that we do in fact have floor plans. So the way we do this, we hear from the applicant first. The board will ask whatever questions of the applicant that the board thinks are appropriate, then we'll open it up to public comment.
Mr. Chair, there are a few more.
Sure.
There are four letters that came in the last few days on support from the neighbors. I won't read them all unless you'd like me to. Megan Dougherty in support, Mark White and Catherine Fitzgibbons of 25 Bay Ave in support, Lynn and Ed Dougherty in support, and Dan May for the May family in 19 Plymouth Ave. And then we also received yesterday conservation memo that just states that the applicants filed a notice of intent and orders were received. And that's everything.
The letters of support, what were the addresses?
The May family is 19 Plymouth Ave. Lynn and Ed Dougherty are 31 Bay Ave. Mark White and Catherine Fitzgibbons are 25 Bay Avenue, and then Megan Dougherty is also 31 Bay Ave.
All right, so 19 Plymouth Avenue is directly across the street. Behind, okay. All right. All right, why don't we hear from the applicant, and then we'll go from there. If, if you want to speak, you got to talk into the microphone, because we're on television.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record. Paul Burgon, Seacoast Engineering, Duxbury, engineer for the Callahan family. I just want to introduce Jamie and Joe Callahan in the second row. They're the owners of the property that unfortunately sustained the fire back on August of 2024. What I want to do is just pass out to everybody except Boris, who's on Zoomed in, to have pictures of the burnt house before it was demolished late August, nearly September of last year. Take a few seconds and just give them to each of the members and... As everyone knows, we're filing to reconstruct the existing house that was destroyed by fire eight months ago. We have been to the Conservation Commission because when a flood had an overlay district, we have to file a notice of intent with conservation. We did that, and the order of conditions was approved last week and issued last Friday, which you have a copy of. We've also been to the planning board, as the chairman indicated, they have deferred their decision to the zoning board. Okay, so the special permit is required primarily because when you look at the third floor of the photos that I gave you, we're basically squaring off the third floor, so it will basically match the two floors below it. Okay? Because of the pre-existing nonconformity of the lot, the pre-existing nonconformity of the structure, a special permit is needed, obviously, but we are very restricted as to what we can and cannot do. So obviously, we will say a few times in the next few minutes that we're basically building a new house on the same footprint, for the most part, that has been there for the last few years. Okay? The nonconformities of the setback distances that are pre-existing nonconforming, I'll just show those very quickly, is we have 10.7 feet on one corner, we have seven feet on the back corner, and those are the two that are primary players at this point in time. Keep in mind, and it's very unusual, that this is a corner lot. Okay? We have Park Avenue to the left, which is a paper street. There's actually a tennis court there, and it's been there for decades. Okay? And obviously, on the low side is Bay Ave, where the Callahans have their house as well.
Paul, before you go very far further, the thing you said, you're going to build on the same, you were going to say, build on the same footprint, and then there was this little language that you used that went "for the most part." What part aren't you doing?
Okay. We're taking the rear of the house up at the top of the plan.
Yeah.
Beginning the new house in exactly the two rear corners that you see at seven feet from the back. So this is being mirrored in here, and the two sides, the left side and the right side respectively, are following everything as the original structure was. When you look at the old plans, there was a, and Joe can help me a little bit here. We had a big porch, and we had a funny little entrance on the left front corner. That's being cut off here, and when you look at the application, the actual coverage of the house is less than it had been. It's a small percentage less. When you look at the coverage, it's 2,396 square feet existing, i.e. last year, 19.17%. What we're proposing now is 2,376 square feet, 20 square feet less, at 19.01. Okay? Plus the fact that on the second floor, there is a two-foot overhang. Okay? And obviously, from a zoning bylaw, that two-foot overhang is the driver with the 10.7 feet of sideline setback or front line setback on the left side, so we cannot get any closer than that. So we've spent a lot of time talking to Mr. Ozlowski, going over the plan, the design, the height of the building, and working with the architect to make sure that what we're doing is equal or less tomorrow as what has been there today. Okay? Anybody have any questions at this point? Good.
Jim, what's, we're okay on height?
Yeah.
Looks like it's 39 and a half, but a 10-foot.
Version of this to get it squeezed in based on the bylaw language, referring to the Gambrel style house. It's there.
I mean, it's tight, but it's there.
Okay, Jim and Joe and I reviewed the bylaw on a number of occasions, and based on the Gambrel roof, the ridge, and the eve height in here, the midroof line is at 39.5 elevation based on NAVD elevations. When you look at the existing 10 feet down here, you subtract 10 from 39.5, we have 29.5. So we're playing with 29 and a half to 29.8 feet of height based on the bylaw from the midpoint between the ridge and the eve height coming out on the frontage side of the house, 20 feet plus or less. In strict compliance.
But we don't measure the baseline height at the, at the, at the structure.
No, it's 20 feet out from the frontage of the structure.
Right. So what's that?
10.1. On the site plan, we have, Lauren, can you go back to the... There's a 10.1 foot elevation that we're proposing when we regrade the open pile foundation to its finished grade. So when you take the 10.1, it's actually in the high nines right now. When you look at the damage that was done to demolish the building, we do have to replace four or five of the exist, or the former concrete piles that are part of the open pile foundation on the left-hand side. Everything will be regraded in accordance with the conservation plan and their order of conditions. Okay? So when you take the 10.1 feet in front of the house, up to the 39.5, 39.6, we're at 29 and a half feet plus. 29 and a half feet plus, but less than 30.
What's the total height?
Total height is... Lauren, could you show us? We're about 40, I think it's about 43, 44 in here. Okay. I'm guessing a little bit, but based on what we've talked about with Jim and Joe before, it's up about four or five feet from, you know, the midroof line that's been determined.
Paul, maybe I'm misreading this site plan, but if I look out in front of this house, I see it, it appears to be plus 9.2.
That's existing. There are spot elevations in front of the house based on the high points and the low points when all the equipment was out there to basically remove the old house and fight the fire. So when we did the topographic plan, the elevations are in the low nines to the high nines.
So it's your position that in order to get to the height that we're going to measure it, you can put more earth in?
No, no. We're regrading the lot as we do with all these lots out there. When we put the open pile foundations in, everything is disturbed.
Yeah, that's the short answer is yes.
Well, we have to grade everything in accordance with the conservation requirements so we don't pocket the water under the house. So obviously, the high point is under the house, and the stormwater will shed in each of the directions away from it. So we have, with the backfilling that we have to do to make this work, we're going to be at around a little over 10 feet for the proposed elevation at the front of the house, 10.1, which is two or three inches higher than what it is right now. Nobody's going to see it, in all honesty, but you have to do it to level off the lot.
Based on this site plan and this drawing, it doesn't look to me like this complies with a height requirement.
Oh, it definitely does.
You go plus 9.2 to 39 and a half, that's more than 30 feet.
It definitely does.
Paul, you have a spot grade on your existing conditions plan from right after the bylaw that says 10.1.
Right. The 10.1 has been there for a long time, but because of all the high points and low points, somebody has to regrade the lot to make everything work out there. It's part of our normal responsibility to site grade the lot. We do this with every property out on the beach. We have to with the open pile foundation.
So there's no architect sitting up at this table, as far as I know. Jim, I think we need some input from you.
So what basically we're talking about, this is a, all right. It's essentially 10.1 on the average grade from what the existing conditions were, and I think what Paul's done, because he's so accurate in the way he did this, he took some elevation markers, and you could confirm this, after they demoed the house and the earth was disturbed. Right? That's the conversations we had about that. So I'm in alignment with what he has for a grade?
They held the stick in a hole.
What's that?
They held the stick in a hole, so to speak.
Yeah, and basically looked at what they had and said, hey, this is where we're at and what we need to do. And I think it's in line with what conservation reviewed on it and approved for finished grade on it, so.
Are you replacing the concrete walkway?
No.
So you're not regrading that area, and that's plus 9.4?
We have great, when you look at the midroof line of 39.5, and you look at 10 feet, there's 29.5. And if you really want to be technical from one side of the lot to the other, come up with 30 feet, you would have to be down at 9.5. And we have a number of elevations there that are on the plan that exceed that 9.5 right now.
Yep, you do.
Okay. So there's your 29.8, 29.9 feet guaranteed. Articles 400 and articles 900.
Let me ask one more question before we move off this topic. Where in the application is the 10.1? In the material before this board, we're being asked to provide a special permit relative to, where does the 10.1?
Show up on the plan.
Show up on a plan? And the 10.1, 20 feet out in front of, 20 feet out in front of the house?
I believe it's on here.
Okay, you got it? All right, good.
It's on here.
Oh, there it is. It's on the site plan, right-hand corner, proposed. But that's immediately among, that's immediately under the house.
I'm just, you're asking where 10.1 is? I'm just looking for it.
Oh, okay. All right. You did find a 10.1, that's correct.
Keep in mind, when we have the overwatch, the storms these grades change. Okay? They may change tonight, to be perfectly honest. Okay? When that overwatch comes over the old seawall in this area, some of these grades will change by one or two tenths. Okay? So we will be committed to the 10.1 and keep the house at 29.8, 29.9 feet. We have to be. Okay, zoning bylaw, articles 400 and 900, section 401.2, 402, 410.4, and 906.2. 401.2 requires us to demonstrate that the new construction will not be substantially more detrimental to what the existing has been. And obviously, you look at what we're proposing there, you look at the existing house where we showed the photos of the burned-out property. Yes, the height of the building is basically the same. We're filling in the third floor and making better use of that, and that's why the, one of the major reasons why the special permit is required, because we're increasing the cubic footage of the total house primarily on the third floor.
You said basically the same. Do we have a, do we have a measurement on the prior building?
By height?
Yeah.
29.9.
29.9.
Yes, sir. It should be on the site plan as well.
All right. So 29.9 is basically the same as 39.5?
Correct. 39.5 minus 10 is 29.5.
How many times have we talked about this?
Okay, article 402, or section 402, flood hazard overlay district. We're in the flood hazard area here, as we know from conservation filing, and we're in flood zone AE 11, which by building code and FEMA requirements require us to construct the new finished first floor elevation at at least one foot above the 11 feet or 12 feet. We're going up another six inches, sea level rise, coastal resiliency issues, and going up to 12.5. So obviously, the new house will be somewhat higher than the existing house had been. Okay? Section 410, residential compatibility. Here, we're dealing with the nonconforming setbacks that we discussed a few minutes ago, and the 30-foot maximum height of the building that we will be constructing too. Section 900, article 9.6 on the special permit, we have to demonstrate that the benefits to the town outweigh any adverse impact for the town and the vicinity. Obviously, this property is very suitable to the neighboring properties. We lost the old house. We're building the new house. Will be built to today's codes from fire codes and efficiency codes, structural codes, and all the waterfront requirements that are normally required here, similar to all the newer construction homes on Bay and Kentucky Avs right now. The property is consistent with all the other neighborhood properties. You received the four letters of support from the neighbors on both Kentucky and Bay Avenue, and this house will be one of the new ones in that area once it's built later this year. And the architect and the building design, obviously compatible with many of the other buildings in the area, especially on the Grinner Road side of town, and what we feel we have done is built or designed something that will fit in with the neighborhood, be an asset to the neighborhood. I know the Callahans have talked to most, if not all, the neighbors over there since the fire last August. And again, the four letters that you've received the last couple of days are indicative of their support of this project. I think in summary, we respectfully request your support of this project. The family has been displaced since August 20th of last year, and this is the last permit that we basically need before we can break ground and build a new house for the family, family of five. So I'd be more than happy to address any more questions. Appreciate your help and support, and thank you very much in advance.
What do you think the increase in volume is?
Third floor. Oh, what it is? It should be on the application. It's a few thousand feet. Volume went from 35,860 square feet to 38,900. So an increase of about 8.67%. Out of that was the forward pile that was nonconforming.
Thank you.
And that's all we have in the application.
I just want to read it.
So the change in volume in the nonconforming space is 44%?
That's correct. In the nonconforming only.
Yep.
And we double-checked it, triple-checked it, ran it by the building department, and it is what it is.
All right. Anybody got other questions?
Just wanted to review the Design Review Board memo again.
Sure.
I think there's a bigger set of issues to discuss that go along with this one application.
Okay.
As for the proposed project, it appears to conform. Jim is telling us it does on height. I think he demonstrated that it does. I kind of share the Design Review Board's perspective on just how much bigger this overall structure is compared with what was there. But I also think I understand why the owner wants to have a bigger house.
Are there other folks who would like to speak to this application? Jim, I'm going to put it to you. You say it complies?
I mean, I sat with these guys, I don't know how many hours, and renditions of this. Part of the concern that I had was, again, we always look at when we're increasing the volume of nonconformity.
Yeah.
And based on my experience and witnessing in the board about those increases, a lot of the design concepts we talked about on the third floor were to, you know, if we wanted to truly look at it as a gambrel, was to take the dormers that they had, and if you look at the design, they're set in from the outside wall, and then they're set in from the gable walls.
Yeah.
Which is kind of consistent in how that, I've always witnessed the board do that. As far as the elevation goes, you know, I'm looking at the plan. I got 9.5, 9.6, open pile. I've got 10.6 at the open pile up near the foundation. It's hard for me to determine what that is. I go off the stamp plan and the engineering that he has out there. That's, you know, I didn't go out there and measure it and do my own elevations. I don't ever do that. I think it's consistent because some other things that I've seen happen in town, and I'm not saying this is the case here, is that I've seen people raise the grade around their house because they can.
Yeah.
And this one, they really can't raise it beyond the limitation of what conservation allows and what was there.
We don't measure from natural grade. We measure from finished grade.
Right. So as far as with respect to the grade issue, you know, conservation is the ruling factor there, and if they're approved it at that grade, that's where I would stand, because I know that in that land, you can't go beyond what their limitations are with it. It is in line. It is bigger. The amount of volume and nonconformity, when you look at it, is, I just wrote it down, it's actually 4,583 cubic volume of increase of the nonconforming nature. And then the size of the house, you know, it calculates out the way you have to do it at 44%. It sounds like a lot, but it's a third, it's actually a third increase. Because the existing nonconforming is 10,380, and the proposed is 14,963.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, it's kind of in line with a lot of these places are doing down there. It's threaded in there, you know, but everything I witnessed and what we did, we worked with these guys, you know, they designed this thing that at a point I said, yeah, you're there now, in my opinion.
We had this discussion on the 40B on Railroad Avenue, where we were all just sort of horrified by the impact. But in fact, the way height was calculated on those buildings was accurate, but you were going to end up with something that was dramatically different from anything around it.
Yeah. And, you know, I do have that section open because it's interesting to me, because of the language of the bylaw, how we determine building height with a gambrel, it specifically says, you know, I'll just read it for the record, "The midpoint between the lowest and highest points of the roof for gable, hip, and gambrel roofs."
Yeah.
So there you go.
Which is not atypical for underzoning bylaws.
Right. It's just that it's, the gambrel-style roof allows you to mask the house bigger.
Right. It gets you height that...
You otherwise wouldn't be able to.
Exactly. That's why people are doing it.
Right.
Judy made a point earlier that I didn't remember in the bylaw, but maybe somebody else was, where does it say we measure from finished grade? I thought it said we measure from grade.
It measured from grade.
So what grade? It's not natural grade. It doesn't say that.
I know it doesn't say natural grade, but I've actually litigated this issue.
Well, you haven't litigated it here.
Right.
That's interesting.
I don't have my bylaw open. I'd have to look.
I don't think it says finished.
I'm going to, I'm going to...
I have the bylaw here. What section are we talking about?
It actually says the vertical distance from the average finished grade.
Finished, okay.
Within 20 feet of the structure on the street frontage side of the building.
All right. I wonder whether it said finished.
I have my bylaw in front of me, but I kind of remember, right? I deal with zoning. It's my life.
And just, because we had another case like this before, not like this, but it was similar in these areas, and the discussion happened, you know, one side of the grade's lower than the other side. Which one do you pick? Well, the frontage point, it's advantage to pick the higher side, and that's what happens.
Well, it says average finished grade.
Right.
But, all right.
Which is important.
Right. So my, does anybody have anything else to ask about this?
None at this point.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
Well, I don't know that we need any more information. I guess that's the first question.
Right. Did somebody want to move to close?
That I would move to close the hearing.
I'll second that.
All in favor, I think Wayne.
Aye, Judy.
Aye, Tanya.
Aye, Emmett.
We've been discussing.
I feel like we've had this conversation so many times.
Sorry.
I know.
Every time.
Every time one of these projects comes in, which is not this applicant's problem. I don't think you can... I think it's kind of hard to deny an application if it conforms with the bylaw.
I agree with that latter proposition. Extremely sympathetic to people wanting to rebuild their burned-down home.
Me too.
My fundamental problem with this proposal is it goes to the absolute max, and it intentionally goes to the absolute max.
But they can. It doesn't, it says they can't. Absolutely can.
They certainly can, but quite frankly, if you're going to do it, you better give me a drawing in the application that shows a finished grade of 10 point, that shows me a finished grade that complies with the bylaw, because I've got nothing here that does.
I understand what you're saying. That's fair. I do.
Emmett? Emmett?
I agree with you. They do meet all the regulations. They have letters. Support.
Well... I actually think this is intending to represent average, but perhaps not.
Yeah, I get that. I would take Tyler to regrade it to the ten point two. I would do that in the future if I was going to regrade, regrade it down there, write the ten point two on the, on it. Right?
Finish grade.
If you tell me no, I won't.
No. All right.
Make a motion?
Yeah. I'm generally, if there's potential that this thing, that a proposal gets, might get denied, I like to take a straw poll, just so that people have a sense of where the board might go, rather than have this conclude in some way that would bar a reapplication for some period of time. So why don't we take the straw poll?
I'd be inclined to vote yes on this.
So I'm inclined to approve it based on the representations from the building department. Which puts a lot of pressure on you, but that's my opinion.
I agree.
Okay. We have five voting people. You need four to one. I don't believe this application complies with the bylaw, and I will vote against it, but you would... So does somebody want to make a motion?
Boris didn't weigh in yet.
Boris, where are you on this?
Yes, well, I'm inclined to go with it. I definitely, I'm not, I'm okay with the grading issue, but Judy had mentioned the railroad ab thing, and we were talking about massing, and in, there was another project, my thought on massing in general is, I mean, if you don't have some, I mean, any change is going to be huge, especially now there's nothing there, but the, my thought on massing is, I prefer the design. That's why I missed, like you had mentioned, we don't have an architect on the board. I mean, nobody ever defends the ultimate design. And like in the case of some projects, we, you know, just to make a concession, we reduce the size, but we also, you know, I think we lose the design. And there was, there was a project, I won't name which one it was, but when it first went up, I said, oh my goodness, what a mistake this is. But it wasn't until I saw the finished result, I was like, wow, this is beautiful. And I, and I was on the fence with it for the massing issue, but the immediate butters were in favor of it. And thankfully, they were, because I think it made an improvement to the overall, you know, experience of the community. I mean, this, the one that I'm referencing is in a very public area, and that was my first, my thought was like, wow, we really did a detriment to the town. But after the finished product was done, I thought, wow, this is beautiful. It's something that stands out, and it was worthwhile. So that's my thought.
So I may be the odd person on the board. I am probably the least influenced of anybody by what a butters say, because I think a butters should not have authority to decide what people do with their property. We spend so much time in this board asking, what do your neighbors say? And we get hung up when the neighbors haven't said anything. But they had every opportunity to comment, and we send people back out to get letters from their neighbors. It's like, some of the stuff we do here is just silly. So I like to hear what the neighbors say, but it's not persuasive for me. A butters will stop anything they can more often than not, so, you know...
I think that what the neighbors say actually bears directly on whether it was a detriment to the neighborhood, because they're in the neighborhood.
I understand that, Wayne, but you know, people think that any change in their neighborhood is a detriment, so I take it with a grain of salt.
Okay.
Could you, could you? I mean, we refer in the bylaw to finished grade. They're proposing finished grade at ten point one. Do you condition it for that?
Yes.
We can do that, sure.
That solves my problem.
And then we're at twenty-nine-five on the finished height of the building. Actually, twenty-nine point four.
That solves my problem.
They have to abide that anyway.
Exactly. I mean, it's part of it anyway, because that's what they're proposing.
Yeah.
And we get an ASBIL, and I think part of it would maybe suggest in the ASBIL that it shows the actual finished grade topo. And I've got a way to verify it.
Perfect. Let's solve the problem. Somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the project as presented. If you want to condition of the elevation that we just spoke of.
Subject to documenting that the elevation does impact, that the project does impact with average finished grade language in the bylaw, and that upon completion, an ASBIL should be submitted to the building department with topographic data sufficient to show compliance.
Correct. You're second. All in favor?
Aye, Judy.
Aye, Tanya.
Aye, Wayne.
Aye, Emmett.
Aye, Boris.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Lauren, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Oh, according to the planning board's four? We're supposed to have a planning, a planning presentation, but we now have three members on the planning board in this room.
Oh. Oh.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure it out.
Well, I think, are you convened as a governing body?
No.
Well, then what's the problem?
Is it on the agenda?
Yeah, it's on the agenda. MBTA community's working for presentation.
Oh.
But the planning board, I'm sorry, what were you saying about the planning board?
You have three members of the planning board here that were conferring about an open issue, and I wonder whether it complies with the open meeting law.
Because it's not on the agenda.
It's not on the planning board agenda.
But it's not...
Which is what I'm saying, the planning, but yes, thank you.
But the question is, is the planning board here convened as a governing body?
It is not.
Then I don't see what the issue is.
Okay, good. That's why I raised the question.
Spoken by a non-attorney member of the board.
Well done, Judy.
We're going to defer to whether anybody else has to make a...
Sure.
All right. The next hearing is relative to two sixty-two to two sixty-six St. George Street, petitioner Sean Boyd, sixteen-twenty Auto Inc., DBA Millbrook Motors. We haven't opened this before.
No.
The Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing tonight to consider the application of Sean Boyd and sixteen-twenty Auto Inc., DBA Millbrook Auto for a special permit under Articles four hundred and nine hundred, sections four oh one, four oh one point two, number two, four oh one point two, number three, four one zero, four two two, and nine oh six point two of the bylaw. The property is located at two sixty to two sixty-six St. George, parcel number one oh six dash seven four two dash zero six zero of the Duxbury Assessor's Map, consisting of one point seven eight acres in the residential compatibility district and the neighborhood business district, and owned by two sixty dash two sixty-six St. George Street LLC. The applicant proposes to reinstate the use of the used car sales on the premises, which expired in two thousand eighteen. A special permit is required. The application may be viewed at the town's website, or on the zoning board of appeals page, or at the municipal services department. Persons who are differently abled, we will make accommodations for. And we've already read the hybrid preface. So we have an application. We have... The proposed striping plan from Duxbury Construction. Mr. Wazalowski's letter, indicating that the proposed Class II use requires a special permit. Some SDEP plans. Construction plan. All right. The Board of Health has no comments. The administrative site plan review decision by the planning board approves it with conditions. The conditions are that each, the plan needs to be recorded. Plan shows the easternmost curb cut, the one-way arrow to enter the site. The driveway should only be used one way, and a no-left turn sign shall be installed. There shall be no displaying of cars for sale on either of the grass islands at the front of the site, so as not to limit the sight lines leaving the property. There shall be a twenty-four-hour access to the rear of site for emergency response vehicles, and the parking spaces shall be constructed as shown on the plan. There's also an ASBIL approval that's required. Lauren, anything else?
Yes. Design Review Board submitted a memo that set out their meeting held on May fourteenth. They considered the application of this case for authorization, authorization to change the use of the property at two sixty dash two sixty-six St. George Street to allow for the sale of vehicles. We have no particular view or position on a proposed change in use, however, if the applicant proposes new or changed signage or other alterations to the property or structures, we'd anticipate a reviewing of the proposals. We also received a memo today from Conservation Commission Administrator Nancy Rufo that states she has reviewed the case and determined it does not fall within jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. The proposed work is not within one hundred feet of a resource area or two hundred feet of a riverfront area, nor is it located inland subject to coastal storm flowage. This office needs no further review. And then there is a lengthy letter from, and a butter, Diane Nelson.
President, I mean, do you want to summarize for the record, or do you want to just...
We, why don't we summarize it for the record?
She writes that she's the closest a butter to the St. George Street property. There are a few things she's asking for clarification of parcel boundaries and development status, the use of residential lot eleven. And then some questions about, can the residential lot be paved? Can vehicles be parked there, short or long term? Can it outbuilding be constructed? Will any activities on this lot create ongoing noise or visual impacts? This seems like a timely opportunity to clarify permanent use and ensure alignment with both zoning and development guidelines. And that's Diane Nelson of sixteen Back River Way.
Okay. So same thing as we did the last time? We'll hear from the applicant. The board will ask questions. Then we'll open it up for the public. Anybody wants to talk about this, please approach the microphone, identify yourself, tell us where you live, but why don't we hear from the applicant first?
Hello, I'm Sean Boyd. I am the applicant for the two sixty St. George Street. I actually work and own the business at St. George Street from two thousand five to two thousand fifteen, the Car Buff. In two thousand fifteen, I was right here again, asking to renew the license or the special permit at Millbrook, because it had expired. We approved that. I've been there for ten years. So now I am looking to move back to St. George Street, where I was originally, before I went to Millbrook, so it's kind of a flip-flop back and forth. The letter that we received about the lot eleven, we will have no business use of that lot eleven. We have no, no plan for that, to have any use of that. We're not changing anything. There's an existing office. I'm going to park some cars right along the edge. I'm asking for twenty cars. I have a twenty-five car license at Millbrook. I right now have eleven vehicles on the lot. I don't have random vehicles sitting around. I have cars for sale, and that's it. So I'm not planning on changing anything over there, just parking cars alongside of the building where it's proposed in the drawings.
You're just going to comply with what the, what the administrative site plan requires, which is that you comply with the parking plan that's submitted. The board have questions?
I don't.
I don't.
I don't have any questions. Would other people like to talk? Come on up.
Hi, Greg Heath, fourteen Salt Metal Lane. I'm also the president of the association, Back River Association, that abuts the St. George Street Garage applicants, so it's a twenty-one cluster subdivision, and we have been following this along the way. Last time I was here, I attended, as well as Zoom. And at that time, it seemed pretty straightforward, wanting to renew a license that expired in two thousand eighteen, kind of go back to when Sid had some used cars along the fence, and bring that idea back. With this new application, seems like things have changed, and to me, you know, I have received multiple concerns from multiple homeowners within the association that I like to just outline for the record. Three categories, alterations to the property, use and limitations of the residential zone, Zone RC, number of used cars that will be for sale, and their location. So in terms of alterations to the property, in the original application, during the previous select board meeting on December second, it was stated that there would be no alterations to the grounds, including in the residential zoned area, as well as the recent application stamped April twenty-eighth. In the application, we state several times that the land and structures would not be altered, there will be no alterations to the current property, no changes to the existing lot or grounds. However, recently, within the past week, backhoe was heard in the back of St. George Street Garage property, and after looking at that property along our boundary lines, we discovered that a large amount of land in the hill behind the property was removed, as well as a number of trees, in which appears to be the residential zone. So the land was altered, and if interested, we do have before and after photos. And then, number two, use and limitations of residential zone, Zone RC. There appears to be some cars parked, which may be on that residential compatibility zone, and just questioning if that's permitted in the residential zone. It's the location where there's been recent grading and cutting into the hill and tree removal.
Could you repeat the two before? It slid by parking up.
Number two? Category?
Just back one, about cars parking in the residential.
Yeah. There appears to be vehicles parked in the back lot, which might be in the residential zone, Zone RC. And then, number three, we're interested in the number of used cars that will be for sale and their location. Again, the prior application during the prior hearing was indicated that the number of used, there'll be a limited number of used cars, maximum of twenty, as the applicant stated. This application does not indicate the maximum number of used cars that would be for sale.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but could you maybe show us on the plan where you're talking about the backhoe and the trees being removed and all?
Well, that would be the residential lots, lots eleven. Yeah, that area.
It's hard to see it on this screen. Okay. It's not actually on that plan.
It's, it's the residential lot behind the existing building.
Yes. That's, it's Zone RC. So, again, on the application, it doesn't state the number of, the maximum number of used cars that would be available for sale. And the proposed location behind the garage indicates 26 spaces, which is of concern to the neighbors, including 15 cars along the residential zone area. During the December 2nd Board of Select Board meeting, it was discussed that if it's a concern to neighbors, we would, we could require the spots to be out front, which would be our desire. So, we just want to raise those three areas of concern, and indicate the number of maximum number of used cars, how the cars parked, really in front of the building as they were back in the 2018 days, along the fence and in the front, and then define any limitations regarding what can be done on the residential zoned property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Others?
Hi, I'm Diane Nelson, 16 Back River Way. You have a letter that I submitted a few days ago. I was here during the first meeting in December, and I listened to, I think it was the owner of St. George Street Garage, so I thought he was actually going to be the one who was applying for the application, but apparently it isn't. So, I listened to it, and I'm thinking, you know what? These people have a good point. The place has been existent selling used cars from 1950 to 2018. I've lived in my house since 1996, had no problems with vision, visual disturbances, no problems with hearing anything, and no odors. So, I'm like, you know what? Go for it. However, things have changed. Most importantly, assurances were made that nothing would change from the prior operation. And I'm thinking they're talking about the prior operation from 1950 to 2018. Things have changed, and, and Greg mentioned them, and I'm sorry, I'm gonna mention them again. The proposal has evolved into a project that now extends to the rear of the property and introduces significant additional parking spaces. What's required for a permit to sell 15 cars? Where did I get the 15 cars? Because that was the previous license was for 15 cars. How did I know he was gonna have 20 cars? It wasn't easy, folks, because it wasn't anywhere in the application, which, which to me speaks to the transparency of this. The only place I found it is, is on that, the parking plan, and I mean, you needed a magnifying glass to find it. Anyway, so, what's required for a permit to sell 15 cars, plus the six bays in the auto repair shop, and the spaces for office workers, is 39 spaces. I, I believe I calculated that correctly. What they are asking for is 59 spaces. That's 50% more, actually more than 50%, than is actually required. This is not part of the historical operations, which is what was presented during the first meeting. Number two, the application also emphasized that we do not anticipate our plan to alter anything on the property. Will that change too? I observed, actually I heard it loud and clear, the backup alarms from a bulldozer or excavator for three days, finally ending on Saturday at about 6:40 PM, and it was loud. The residential lot was graded or leveled, and they really carved into the hill, which I guess to expand the horizontal surface of the lot. So, I really don't understand why they were messing with the, with the residential lot to begin with. Maybe they're gonna have a Christmas tree farm there, I don't know.
Sir, what did, what was the last thing you said?
I said, maybe they were going to have a Christmas tree farm there, but I don't think so. So, the issue is, I think the impulse for commercial business to spill over into that residential lot will be pretty tempting. There are no stakes to show where the commercial lot ends and the residential lot starts, so who's gonna know the difference? I actually will know the difference, because the sightline is a pretty much a straight arrow from the end of my fence, straight across the lot, and that's how I know that, that they did migrate into that residential lot when they, when they, when they did the excavation. And not only that, but there, I think there are cars parked there right now on, on the residential lot. Okay, another change, three, the number of used cars will be 20, as opposed to the previous permit of 15. Honestly, I don't even remember 15 cars there. They're usually lined up on that stockade fence that separates Far Far's from, from the gas station. Maybe they were 15, but I never saw 15. Okay, last point I want to make, the applicant states he will be conducting business in the same manner as he has over the past nine and a half years. That's on the application. His business right now is at the intersection of Routes 139 and 3A, and does not closely abut a residential neighborhood, like my house. So, it's not apples to apples. Assurances based on past practices at a commercial location do not provide confidence that similar operations so close to a residential location will be the same. I guess, in closing, I'm disappointed that before this permitting process has even finished, promises have been broken. These discrepancies between the application's claim and the observed activities raise questions about the true scope of the proposed operations and whether verbal assurances will be honored. And I, I do have some requests that I hope the board will consider. One is to have a surveyor place a permanent marker to define the lot, the lot line between the commercial and the residential properties, because right now, it just looks like one big old lot. It's all flat. Establish a 50-foot buffer zone on the commercial lot. I have a 50-foot buffer zone on my residential lot, so, and he has no buffer zone? And to remove the 15 parking spaces adjacent to the residential lot. The fourth thing, no weekend work involving loud, heavy equipment. That's all I got.
I, Mr. Chair, a quick question. Just for clarification, you were talking about a permit application in December, but...
I went to the first meeting in December, so that was...
That must have been with the planning board.
That wasn't with us.
The planning board, yes.
Thank you, I just was wondering who that was with.
I, I do have a question. I, I'm looking at the special permit that was initially granted. I don't see anything about 15 cars.
No. Oh, are you wondering where I got the 15 cars? I got it because I looked at the, the past permit, because the implication...
I have the past permit.
What permit do you mean?
I have a copy of it, too. I mean, there's several of them.
I believe they're referring to the Class II license from the Select Board.
Oh, the license from the Select Board.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's a license.
There was no zoning limitation.
Yeah, there was no, I didn't see a zoning limitation on the number of cars. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair, we have somebody on Zoom that's going to speak.
Sure. Whoever raises their hand on Zoom, you're up, and just identify yourself and where you live.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful, my name is Breeling, I live on 1041 Union Street. I grew up in town, I went to high school, Sid back in, back in the day at St. George Street Garage, used to lower my tires, to take my Bronco out on the beach and fill my tires when I came back. The owner is the most stand-up guy I could, I could find, and he has worked at that garage since he was, oh my gosh, I must've been 16, so he must've been 17 or even. He has the utmost respect for that area, and as soon as the papers were signed, he owned it, my dad came down, Ed O'Donnell, and he and my father worked blood, sweat, and tears to make that a beautiful spot. Barney's is now on Isor. I think it brought everything up to the level that, you know, where bench runners and everything got crazy, I think that St. George Street is outstanding stuff. And I can assure you that he's not looking to use cars, sale the lot or anything. He's just looking to take someone's Jeep that they're retired from and sell it to, you know, Johnny's, Johnny June here, who's just getting his license, or sell a part that Grandma never used to, a mom and he, he's not looking to, you know, have, have the wobbly arm guys out there and, you know, advertising spunk shots in the house, as far as out back. But I, I think that that's really, it's really just more of a removal of really dangerous old trees that have not been dealt with since 1950, 1960, when the building was built. And I, I think that if you give him a chance, I don't think he's trying to use anything. I don't think that he'll be to disturb the neighbors, and as far as I'm concerned, I didn't see any legal law for required, and I know that, I know that the owner and the, all the mechanics there have, he almost sponsored for Ducksbury. He's definitely not trying to change the face at all. If anything, he's trying to make it more, more Ducksbury, more pinked up, and he just wants to be able to put, you know, stuff that maybe isn't so attractive out back. That's very much all it is. So, I think that, I think that if we give him a chance, he'd better for a real long time, and he's done real good to everyone from the police station, and, you know, families in need, like I said, so, I don't know, I'll spend two cents if I've been down there. I don't think he's doing anything but bettering the property and bettering the view, and unfortunately, sometimes we have to work on Saturdays, you know? But it is, it is what it is. I think that, or what if we're, he's bettering town.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Boyd, can you come back up for a second? What's your plan for operating hours?
So, I currently work from 10 to 5, Monday through Friday, and Saturday, 10 to 3.
And, and that's the operating hours?
That's my operating hours at Millbrook for the past 15 years. I have 10 years.
What about signage?
I really don't plan on putting any signage up. Everything's, everything's done online. I, I have a sticker on my window that says Millbrook Auto Sales, with my phone number and the website, that's all. I, there's a big window right in the front.
Can you talk a little bit about the clearing of the, the land in the back?
I actually don't know anything about that. I'm still over at the other place, at Millbrook. I, I believe Mike, and he's here, Mike is here, the owner of the property. I believe he was just cleaning up debris from back there that has been there forever. He just recently bought the property. I'm not putting any cars out back for sale, I'm not gonna be able to sell a car that's out back. If they pull up the, the, where I plan on putting the vehicles, I'm not gonna change, you know, I, I worked at that business for 10 years, and I sold cars out of there from 2005 to 2015. So, this is where DEK was originally, this is the office I'll be using, here, where you pull into the lot. There's a little storage room and a bathroom in here, and this will be my office. And then I just plan on parking cars right along the wall here. And there's actually a room, a little bit of room right here before, that all my cars are gonna be right here.
So, that would be acceptable to you as a condition of the permit?
Yeah.
That's only 12 spaces.
I'm not trying to over, I'm not gonna overwhelm the property with cars, he's not gonna, the owner's not gonna let me either. And I, I don't have, I only have 11 vehicles on my lot right now, so my cars fluctuate between 10 and 20 cars, but it doesn't stay that high, and even at Millbrook where I have it. I probably, okay, with the lot full, I'd probably fit 15 cars there, and the only time I have 20 is vehicles myself, is when I have some at the auctions and they come and go. I don't really have, I stay small, just me and my father. It's my business, so, and I just need to move out of the property, I mean, that's, and I've always had, I've been at Ducksbury. My mother was a teacher and here for 30 years, so, I've been in town over 20 years. I'm not trying to change anything.
Sir, come, come on back up.
Not for nothing, but their husband used cars there for many years.
Thanks.
Greg Heath again. I do have photos, I know you asked about the, what was going on in the back, if you're interested in seeing the before and after.
I drove through today.
Excuse me?
I drove through the place today, as, I tried to look at everything.
Yeah.
Can we see the pictures? That'd be very helpful, thank you.
So, just before, and then what it looks like now. And that cuts into the back hill.
People are allowed to move their trees.
Oh, no, they're not, just wondering.
Can I speak to just some of the concerns I have, if it's helpful at all?
Yeah.
Lauren, could you throw up the GIS and then put on the latest near map? Just for clarification, of some of the concerns that I've been listening to. Base map. Go to local. Latest near map.
My name's Jim Wazeluski, I'm the building commissioner. I just wanted to speak to some of the big concerns that I keep hearing from Back River and stuff. This parcel of land that connects from here to here, this triangle, was part of the Back River development.
Right.
When that was done, and that was purchased by these guys prior to the new owner that had it. This is my understanding of it. And some of the concerns, when I look at old GIS and near map stuff to 2014, that I keep hearing from Back River people, is that the previous owner was using this to store vehicles and boats and things like that there. And that's the big concern that I keep hearing about, trying to delineate this residential lot from the business, and that's the big concern. And I don't know if that's something that can be done with this permit to satisfy that need for those folks.
He's not allowed to use it?
Correct.
So, we have, we have to have faith in, if, if he's using it, somebody's gonna come to you and say, he's using it.
And then I come there and do that, right.
You can't, you can't use the residentially zoned land for that purpose.
It's cut and dry.
Exactly, I know that 100%. I don't know about it, I don't drive around every day looking for things, they come into my office when it's a problem.
How big is the, how big, how big is the residential zoned lot?
I don't, I can't, I don't recall it. It's not on the plot plan, but it's less than, it's less than an acre. I think it's like .45, if I'm doing this from memory.
22,511 square feet.
Yeah.
So, he didn't need a clearing permit?
No. I, I only found out about that today. I took a drive-through there also, sorry, cleared up. I did get a, another concern, I was gonna write a memo to the board about this, but then after speaking with the applicant that did the plot, the review, the concern was that the neighbor thought that they were gonna be putting a lot of impervious tar back here, bit mist, but then, my understanding is that's not true, and there's, there was no change to the impervious soil, which is why there were no drainage calculations needed to be done on it, because that was a concern that was addressed to me. And I wanted to suss that out and clear that up, but I wanted to mention it just because it was a concern of somebody, and address that and just let, let you guys know. The biggest concern is that, is trying to somehow delineate this so they aren't using that without me going out there every day.
I don't think he'll be able to with all the eyes looking, honestly.
The other question I have for you, Jim, is, is, is what we're, is what we're doing, we've been asked for a special permit to, to permit this use, this previous use.
That's correct. It's, has no bearing on that, really.
There's already been an administrative, administrative site plan approved for this.
I agree.
So, the question before us is not how we're gonna design the...
It's use.
It's use.
Yeah. That's our jurisdiction here.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just had a lot of noise, I just wanted to bring it up to the board.
We can put limitations on the use, which is why I asked the gentleman how, when he wanted to be open.
Yeah.
Excuse me, sorry.
Could you go up, please?
I'm looking at the application right here. Unless I misheard...
Unless I misheard him, I thought he said ten to five. This application says Monday through Saturday, eight to five.
No.
No?
Nope, that's not, that's not true.
It's, it's, I mean, I...
The question should go to the board.
Through the chair, please.
Okay, so, and if we appreciate this, we can put limitations on, if we approve it. So thank you. I mean, I, I don't disrespect your attempt to be honest here, but it's something we can address.
Yeah, I, my recollection is to do, the, the application said eight to five most days and then half a day on Saturday, but, but maybe I was wrong.
Sure.
Hi, I'm Mike Staples. I'm the owner of St. George Street Garage LLC. I just want to, uh, make clarification that we will not be using zone eleven for any business that would be used cars or any of the existing business. Um, so just clarify that, that we are not looking to use zone eleven.
Yeah, the, the application literally does say business hours will be Monday through Saturday, eight to five.
Uh, my business hours right now are eight to five.
Okay.
So as far as out back, what you did, would, would you stipulate that you were just cleaning up junk that was there for...
Cleaning up, I wasn't like digging in down, making a giant hole. I was cleaning up, lot of trees hanging over that edge, which there still is a huge buffer berm with all sorts of trees that provides a lot of privacy to the neighbors. I cannot see Back River looking out my, my window and they can't see me. So there is still plenty of privacy there.
All right.
And there's still prob, in the very back, maybe fifteen, twenty feet of berm, at least ten feet tall, and then trees on top of that. So all the hanging ones and dangerous stuff's been cleared up.
Paul Baker, also live on Back River Way. I support what Greg and Diane have said, I won't repeat it. Uh, but a couple of the, uh, additional comments are, um, yeah, to be clear, it was not just cutting down trees. It was removal of earth as well and the flattening of earth that was a much bigger berm before, which seems to fly in the face of the previous statements of nothing in the footprint of the property is going to change. That's one. Two is, uh, something I'm worried about is the semantics of fifteen cars for sale. Well, how do you define fifteen cars for sale? Is it, they have a sticker in the window that says they're for sale and I've got twenty-four other cars that are waiting to be sold, that are on deck? Or frankly, when somebody comes into the lot to buy a car, they don't see one they like in the fifteen, so I wanna show them the other twenty that are on deck behind the building, et cetera. So I would respectfully ask that there be a definitive, this is the maximum number of cars that can be on the property, not define them whether they're for sale or something else. Um, because I think that there's a lot of room for wiggle and semantics, et cetera, to, to have much more there. Let's face, I, I support and applaud entrepreneurs, uh, in small businesses. Usually the objective is to grow and be bigger. And if you've got the means and the space, et cetera, to do so, that's what it's for, that's what you're going to do with that space.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Jason Carlton, One River Lane. Uh, my family owns the property that's west.
Could you just bring the microphone up with you so that people in the audience can hear? Thank you.
Okay, we own this piece of property directly west. Uh, first, just wanna say how happy we are about all the work that Mike's done. Uh, he took a very falling apart garage and he's making it very nice, putting a lot of time, a lot of money. And it's coming out really nice. Regarding this application, we have two concerns. One is, we're eight to ten feet lower, so if things start to happen in the back with the parking and they decide that they don't wanna have a sand lot back there, we'd like to be assured that we're gonna be taken care of and the, our issues are gonna be addressed. The next one is, there currently, there's no perimeter lighting on the property. And if there becomes perimeter, perimeter lighting on the property, that could have a negative effect on our property with our tenants, cause we have apartments on the property. Other than that, it is a gas station, it is a garage, they work on vehicles, there are vehicles that come and go for different things, kinda isn't suit with what's going on there today right now, so.
Thank you.
So you're in favor of it?
I'm in favor of it as long as things don't happen like asphalt's put in the backyard and things like that and it turns into a large impervious coverage.
Got it.
Understood.
Okay, anybody else like to weigh in here? Board have any questions? More questions?
No.
No, no que, uh, thoughts?
I, I do have a question before we close this. Mr. Boyd, you, you said ten, the application says eight. Is there a preference?
To the number of vehicles?
No, to the time that you wanna open.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm open at ten and I close at five, Monday through Friday. I open ten to three on Saturday. It's been, it's been like that forever. That's my, all hours of operation.
So the permit could stipulate that?
Absolutely.
Perfect. Then we address that. Thank you.
There's a hand up on the...
All right, one more hand up.
Oh, she looks like she took it down.
Okay. So would anybody like to make a motion to close the public here?
I'd make a motion to close the public here.
Second.
All in favor, I, Wayne.
Hey, Tanya.
I, I Emmett.
Oh, I do.
Okay.
Sorry.
Discussion.
I'm not ready to vote on this tonight.
Okay.
Just want you to know. I have time to think about it.
All right.
It's just me.
Emmett?
Uh, uh, some thoughts. Um, as, as Mr. Carlton said, in a garage, a gas station, a used car lot for a long time. I understand there's a residential lot out back. They can't use it. Uh, stipulated that if they use that, they're, they're in error of their, their permit if it gets, if they get it. Um, as far as buffer zones, I believe that whole thing is a buffer zone out back in, in reality. Uh, it's twenty-eight thousand square feet and most of that is a buffer to the Back River. I believe that's sort of why it was all done that way. I remember when the Back River wasn't the Back River, it was, we drove our dirt bikes back there.
That's right.
Uh, literally. Uh, and as far as, um, I'm a small business owner as well. As, as far as stipulating how many, how many, uh, parking spaces or cars or cars for sale, uh, I, I find that problematic. He's asking for a twenty, twenty, number twenty for the amount of cars that he could sell on the lot at any time. That's his rule. I mean, he, he can't, he can't break that or, or he's, he's in error of, of a special permit. But the other part is, there, there's an existing business there and I know cars come, cars go, maybe a motor's blown up, that takes three or four or five or twelve days to do, so they could, the repairs could stack, stack up. And that's his goal, to have, to have a lot of cars to work on. And I think my last thought is, um, I do get gas there. The place looks absolutely fantastic as to what they've done and, and I believe they'll do the right, I, I know they'll do the right thing because there's so many eyes watching them. Uh, and a simple phone call to Jim, or whoever the Jim is, will, will prompt a site visit and, and letters will be written and that sort of thing. Those are my thoughts. Boris?
I echo Emmett's thoughts and opinions, uh, a hundred percent. I couldn't, I, I, I can't have more.
So this is, this is a permitted use by special permit in this area?
Correct. And it was there previously for a number of years. It just was voluntarily abandoned.
Lapsed.
Right, so the existing special permit went away.
So it's a new special permit.
It's a new special permit. It's a permitted use pursuant to our bylaw.
Correct. It's allowed. An approved site plan.
Yeah, and an approved administrative site plan. I, my sense of this is that there are very few business districts in this, in this town. And we have to encourage people to continue to run businesses and do nice work and, and that's all that I've seen happen on this site over the last several years. So I, I am in favor of this. I think there is a natural limitation as to how many cars they can sell because there are multiple businesses working at this site. Um, and the site plan is what it is and it's, the administrative site plan says that the parking has to be consistent with the site plan. So I'm, I'm personally in favor of this application and would approve it.
It's also, just for clarification, the license that was issued is for twenty cars, right? So, wait, yeah, so they can't go above that.
That was the old license, right?
No, that's the current one. Yeah.
I didn't hear that.
Is there a license?
Asking about the, the license. I think they have to go...
The license, so they, they can't get the license from the select board until...
Until they get a special permit.
Till they get a special permit. The select board, if they choose to...
They can do what they want.
They can do what they want with the limit.
Right.
The previous license that was issued for years was fifteen. So he's asking for twenty, but there's a greater improved site plan than what was there previously. So that's all consideration for the select board to determine that. It's really the use that we're here for, which has been there. And it's allowed.
Intensity of use is partially a function of the number of vehicles being sold on the site.
Right.
Right. So Tanya, how do you feel?
I'm in support of it.
You are?
I am.
I, I never said that I'd go for it.
So, I mean, it sounds like you've got to work out.
Sure. I, I would like to take a motion to approve the site plan in the special permit as presented. Uh, yeah, uh, with, well, it is, we can stipulate, but he's not allowed to use, it's a separate lot, we can't really, we're not looking at that lot today. We're looking at this lot, not the back one. So it really, A and B don't go together. Um, so, do I have a second on that motion?
Do you, just for clarification, cause you mentioned it, do you wanna condition it for the hours that...
I do.
Yes.
Yeah, so the gentleman says that he, he works ten...
Ten to five?
Ten to five and ten to three on Saturday.
Yeah.
And so I, that would be a condition...
Absolutely.
Just wanted to clear that up.
I, my personal view is that I would not. I think we do have the ability to condition the number of spaces.
We do.
But, but...
For intensity of use.
Right. But I frankly don't know enough about the business to know whether five additional cars on a car lot creates any greater real intensity or not. And I would leave that up to the, to the select board with respect to the class two license.
They're not looking at the use.
Right. But they determine the number of spaces with the note.
That's, that's fine. I mean...
I'll second that very long motion.
So let's restate it. The motion that we're, is to approve the special permit for the, for this use pursuant, with the limitation that hours of operation be ten to five weekdays and ten to three on Saturdays, closed Sundays? All in favor, I, Wayne?
I, Emmett.
I, Tanya.
I, I, Boris.
Okay, that's approved.
Good luck.
Please record one extension.
Okay.
I'm not ready to vote against it and I'm not ready to vote for it, so I'd like to abstain. I'd like that on the record.
We have some administrative issues.
Should I take two minutes ago?
Yes.
Scared?
Yes.
I wanna reset.
Me too.
All right, I'm sending those down.
Thank you. Thank you. This'll be the third time I'm listening to the MBTA over there.
I can't believe you're going...
I don't even know why it's in front of us, like, we don't have any role in this. Planning board's problem. Sorry, I'm just, I'm, I'm up to my neck in this, so it's just like, I just don't wanna hear about it anymore.
Um, so, you've heard about it twice already. You're up to your neck in it and understand it fully. I clearly understand it.
Yeah.
Um, let's just ask Emmett and Boris whether they wanna hear it.
Well, I, you know, you've got committee members here. I don't wanna be rude to people who made an appointment to see the board. I, really, I don't. I don't think that's fair. We can just sort of do a condensed review of it, but people ask for time with the board. They're trying to go around and make sure everybody understands it.
Right, no, I get it.
It's fine. This also ends up being televised like, you know, over many, over many...
That's true. That's true. All right. Tanya, or Lauren, do we, do we have, uh, meeting minutes?
Yeah. We wait for Emmett or we good?
Besides which, if we talk about it, then I can ask my questions about what's going on with town council.
Yeah, I know.
I know. I'm dying to get that on the record.
Stir things up a little bit.
There we go.
That'll wake us up.
You guys want anything? Nothing sweetie.
I'll take one. That's my favorite. Thanks.
Yep.
I don't.
I got it.
Go away.
Thank you.
Do you guys like candy? Candy? God, I smell a yard.
It's not snow.
I know.
True. Boy, coming home tonight from, hang on.
It was, I came from Boston, it was brutal.
The heat, the wind was just unbelievable along the coast. It was crazy.
So this is, um, down off of Bay Road.
Mm, God.
That's coming up to the duck.
Yep, look at that, Jesus. Oh my God.
Yeah, when there's white caps on the duck, you know it's time to move. On my way, I noticed the, uh, drones were always pretty full.
So this is my quiz for all of you. Do you know how many towns have adopted MBTA community zoning? You got two seconds.
Twenty-three.
Two seconds, you got two seconds.
Hundred and seventy-seven.
Hundred and thirty-three.
I thought it was a hundred and thirty-two, but you know, it was...
All right. So next up on the agenda is administrative. Uh, the MBTA Communities Working Group asked to come talk to us. Why don't we hear from them relative to whatever they came for?
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'm Steve Gant, two sixty-five West Street, chairman of the MBTA Communities Working Group, under the planning board. Um, I'm deeply appreciative that you're indulging us this evening. Wayne, you've heard this a couple of times. Tanya, you've heard it. Judy, you know what's going on.
I'm going to stop you for a second, Steve.
Sure.
I really do have some concern about open meeting law. We have three members of the Planning Board talking about a, talking about a proposal that's going to be ultimately made by the Planning Board. I am going to step out for this right now, because I don't feel appropriate, like I'm appropriately here. And then I'll come back.
Good, better to err on the cautious side.
You just don't want me to raise my questions about Town Council.
He just wants to leave.
You can ask me anything you want, but-
I'll go straight to the force. Anyway, Steve, sorry.
Sorry.
Thank you. Madam Vice Chair, do I address you as such?
Fine.
Thank you. So we put this presentation together. This is how we're messaging to the town, to different boards and groups that we're meeting with here in town as well. So we'll kind of go through it quickly here, so you'll be able to see it. So we can go to the next slide, or the first slide, I should say. So this is really, yeah, the agenda that we would, that we present in three parts. First part is understanding the law. What's the, what's the act itself? How does the law affect the town of Duxbury? And a little bit about the working group ourselves. Second part is Duxbury's response to the law here. Feedback that we got from Town Meeting last year in November. Lawsuits that are currently challenging the law. And then preparing the proposition for compliance that we're going to be putting before the town on June 16th. Third part here is preparing Duxbury's next steps. Talking about our compliance strategy, and then the opportunities for public outreach. So, the MBTA Communities Act, again, this was signed into law in 2021. It requires 177 communities in Eastern Mass to update their zoning bylaws. That gives property owners the right to build multifamily housing in some locations. Interesting fact here is that 177 communities, that's almost exactly half of the municipalities in the state of Massachusetts that are requiring this. It's, this is intended as a measure to increase the supply of reasonably priced homes. And it allows the, it gives the towns a lot of leeway to choose the locations where we'd like to put the, these multifamily housing zones.
You mean it's not one size fits all?
Not, not quite one size fit, in some ways it is, Judy, in some ways it is.
I'm going to be a peanut gallery, Judy.
You had to get that in, Judy, I know. But, and the other thing that's really important to know, I think you all know, but it's important for everyone to understand. This does not require any construction, either on the part of the town or anyone else. This is really just permissions here that we'd be granting. Go to the next slide. MBTA Communities Work Group, again, I mentioned the chair tag, here is the Vice Chair of the group with us as well. We were appointed by the Select Board, and we're engaged and charged with developing a compliant response to the law. We have seven members. Meetings are held on Thursdays. We met just before this, and all of our meetings are open to the public. So how does this impact Duxbury? You know, there's really three, three main impacts here. We're required to identify at least 50 acres in town where the owners would have the right to build multifamily housing. Second one, you know, Duxbury, we're required to pass a zoning plan through Town Meeting by mid-July to avoid legal consequences in the special town meeting that we have planned here, and scheduled is for June 16th. The third impact here, you know, by, if we pass a zoning plan, again, we're not required to build anything or pay for any housing. You know, we only need to make it legal for owners to build multifamily housing to the densities that we would specify in the districts that were, the two sub-districts that we're specifying. Next, next slide. So the feedback that we got from Special Town Meeting from fall of last year, you know, we heard the town loud and clear. They rejected the plan. One of the sub-districts that we had was Bonji's Turkey Farm, it's a greenfield site. It was likely that something would have been developed there in fairly short order.
You mean like a 40B?
I'm sorry?
You mean like a 40B?
Well, again, this is, you know, what we're proposing here. Oh, you're joking, Judy. Why did I question that Judy would know what she was talking about? My goodness gracious. So it would have permitted by right, you know, multifamily housing on that Bonji site. So something very possibly could have been developed there. So I think that was a big part of what the, what the response was from the town. They didn't want that. They didn't want that where that would be happening in the immediate or near future. And they expressed interest also in knowing whether it was possible to avoid complying with the law. So those are really the messages that we heard from them.
I think another big misconception was, I'm not on any social media. But they thought it was going to be 40B and low income and all of that. The, the people as a whole who voted it down, I believe that was a huge part of it. So part of the homework is to get that across.
We've been making clear when questions have come up, particularly during our public outreach, there's a clear distinction between what we're doing here and what would be, you know, what would be possible with a 40B. So that's, that's, I think, one of the biggest misconceptions that we have.
Right.
So we're careful to explain the difference there.
What's that?
I thought that part of these had to be affordable.
No, they don't.
No, there's no requirement for-
You can build $2 million condos.
So, but, good, well, that-
That's a, that's a big point.
Yeah, well, that is a good point, Jim, and it's important to know that. The law doesn't require that any of the, any of the permitted, permitted units here be affordable. However, what we're doing is, in the bylaw, we're specifying that, that 10% of any units that would be built would need to be affordable at 80% of AMI or below. So-
That might hurt your chances.
Well, the reason why we're doing that is because if we didn't, and anything that was built was not, was not restricted affordable, what that would do is that would hurt our SHI percentage. Because right now we're at about 7.5. What we'd be doing is we'd be building, building the denominator on the SHI calculation, and we'd be falling further behind the 10% that we'd need to get to, to avoid 40B developments in town. So that's why we, so if we have a 10% affordability threshold here, that just allows us to keep pace with our existing SHI percentage.
Did the town consider, I think I may have read something about this, maybe trying to get a feasibility study done to see if you could go up over 10%?
Yep, as I take a breath, that's where I was going next.
Okay, just curious.
So the bylaw specifies that, yes, so a minimum of 10%, but we can go up to 20% provided we have a feasibility study that would say that it's economically feasible to have a, have affordability at some level above 10%. So, you know, we could possibly go up to 20%.
Are we doing that, or are we just setting that aside for now?
Well, we would like to have that, the Affordable Housing Trust has indicated that they would pay for the cost of a feasibility study provided the town passes the bylaw at Special Town Meeting.
Sure.
Yep. So if we do that, then the, then they will pay for that. And then if the feasibility study shows that we could, that we can go higher, then the bylaw would permit us to go up to that limit.
M.A., I mean, I know you know this, but M.A.P.C. can do those studies.
Yes, yeah.
But Judy, if we're figuring out a spot that we're never going to build them-
What difference does it make?
Hold on, why would you waste some of the Affordable Housing Trust money on a study that's never going to be opened or used?
And a valid point.
Right, I mean, that would be really silly, and I'd be annoyed that, all right, let's do a study to put back in the closet.
I think all I'm saying is if you got-
No, I get it.
Yeah, if you got pressed into it, M.A.P.C.'s been doing them.
Yep. No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
You probably know this, but-
Yep, yes. Thank you. Next slide? That's okay. So legalities of the, of the act. You know, you might recall, of course, in January, the SJC, they ruled in the Milton case that the act is constitutional, and the Attorney General can enforce it. We're still seeking an exemption right now from compliance, and a lawsuit that the town has filed in Superior Court arguing that the law, that the law is an unfunded mandate. We don't know what the outcome is going to be there, you know, based on, based on precedent. But if the lawsuit does succeed, then the state can choose, you know, if the lawsuit does succeed, the state can choose to fund the law, and it would be enforceable again, again, if we got a favorable ruling under the unfunded mandate, under the unfunded mandate challenge. Next slide? So the benefits, you know, we're focusing on this as a, as a positive proposition. The benefits of complying with the law, we retain our eligibility for at least 17 state grant funding programs. And then some examples of things that those fund here in town. Protecting areas from storms and flooding, upgrading infrastructure. That includes a sidewalk project on Washington Street. And just looking at the recent past, in '23 and '24, we received over $2 million that we would be ineligible for if the town was not compliant under this particular law. And then we've currently applied for about $1, $2 million, $2 million in new grants that we'd be ineligible for. So there's a lot of money at stake here, both, you know, in the past. You know, past is precedent. It looks like it. You know, we'd stand to lose quite a bit. And then the other important thing here, too, is that we'll maintain control over our zoning. What we'll do is we'll avoid additional costs to achieve compliance. Town Meeting, as we learned last year, is about $24,000 per meeting. There's legal expenses that we're incurring, consultants, and so on. So that would, we mercifully bring that to an end. And then if we don't choose our zoning loca, you know, if we don't choose to pass this, then there's the possibility that the state could come in, and they could do that for us in locations that we don't like, and on terms that we would find not particularly advantageous, so. So here's the, this is the proposed map. You can see here, in the big green part here, there are two, two locations. The MCOD, Multifamily, Multifamily Communities Overlay District, Kingstown, and the Multifamily Communities Overlay District Tremont. So MCOD, Kingstown and MCOD Tremont. The, the MCOD Kingstown, that is at the area that we know as the Village of Duxbury. And the MCOD Tremont, that is in the area known as the Island Creek Residences. We chose those developments because they are the densest existing developments in town. What this plan would do is it would result in no additional capacity being permitted at the Village of Duxbury, that MCOD Kingstown location. And at Island Creek Residences, so that's the MCOD Tremont, we expect that that proposal would not result in any new housing in the near term. So we go to the next slide? And so this is the, these are the sites in a little bit more detail. So on the left you have the Village of Duxbury, and on the right you have the Island Creek Residences. And it also includes the First Baptist Church. And then the numbers that you see in the green boxes there right in the middle, those are the acreages that are bound by the, by the yellow boundaries. And so what we did, in particular with the Village of Duxbury, the area that's bounded by the yellow, that, that's not the entirety of the village. If you look up here, I'm just going to pull this off. This area up here also belongs to the village, but we chose, we carved that off. So obviously it's greenfield. That would have raised the possibility that there was new development going on there. So we were careful to, to make the boundary around, as close as we could, around the existing dense development there at the village.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yes, go ahead, Jim.
So, I think in, if I recall this correctly, when the last review of the proposal before last Town Meeting, the error was made that they didn't include the way as a deduction in the calculation, which is what made it non-compliant. And you guys get that all sussed out with this one, right?
Yes, we corrected that. We had a different consultant working with us this time.
M.A.P.C.
And we were able to get that, yeah, M.A.P.C. was assisting, assisting us this time.
Yeah, great.
So we made sure that that was corrected.
Excellent.
So the state has seen this, yes? We've had, we've submitted this to EOHLC?
So we have submitted the maps, and we've submitted the bylaw-
And the model?
To EOHLC, and they are currently reviewing it. That's what we referred to as a pre-review.
Right.
So they're taking a quick look at it, and they're going to give us, we expect, we hope, it will give us some feedback prior to Special Town Meeting that would give us time to make any changes that we'd need to make.
So M.A.P.C. didn't see any potential red flag with including the church?
They did not see, they did not see a problem with that, no.
Okay.
Nope, so, so, and as you pointed out, Judy, yeah, so this area right here, so this is where, this is the First Baptist Church right here. We actually, we didn't need that area there.
Okay, all right.
We carved that off. But they do own, yeah, they do own a couple of other parcels. They own this right here.
Yes. That's where the septic, that's where the sewage treatment plant is, I believe. Or the, the leaching area for it.
Well, now, as I understand it, and then it also includes their parking lot over here.
Yeah.
As I understand it, the Baptist Church actually is using, for their waste disposal, they're tied in-
Yes.
With the waste treatment facility for Island Creek.
Yes, that's right.
So, yes. So, so I, so I don't know, I, because I don't know.
Yeah.
But I don't, unless that's the leaching field for Island Creek, I don't think that that's a leaching-
It's a shared facility, is what I'm referring to. I apologize. I'm confusing things here, but-
Nope, that's, that's fine. An important thing to know here, you know, at least one of these has to comprise 50% plus-
Right.
Of the entire 50 acres. And so Island Creek is the larger of the two, so that's, that allows us to go over, over the 50. So we are exact, almost exactly at 50, you have 50 acres. We're at 50.1 acres.
Did we lose any area in either of those polygons? Did we lose any for non-developable land?
I don't believe we did, no. We had some previous iterations when we were doing this last year for Island Creek. We had, we had initially looked at going into the cranberry bogs there, but-
Yeah, yeah.
That was, that was not the appropriate thing to do. So, so we tightened it up around areas that could just be developed, so. Great, thank you. So again, why we're proposing zoning where multifamily housing already exists, you know, this has been approved by the state before. You know, Braintree and Hingham have taken this approach, something similar, and the state has said that that's okay. They, you know, the expanded development rights, this would create very few opportunities to add new units here. And adding new units to properties with existing apartment buildings, it's, it's difficult, and it's expensive, where it's even possible. The Village of Duxbury, that is already at the proposed density. So what we're doing is we are proposing that the density for the Village of Duxbury sub-district, that would be at 12 units per acre under this particular bylaw amendment. The, the density that's there right now is just about 12 acres. So there's really nothing possible that you could be able to do to add new units there, even if you wanted to. So at the HOA, you know, Condo or Cooperative Board there, you know, they'd need to pass a majority vote to evict residents to make changes to the properties. Just adding to the difficulty, of course. And then, yeah, I mentioned this earlier, the Island Creek wastewater facility is, is being shared with the, you know, with the Baptist Church, and it's already at her near capacity, so they'd need to do something with that in all likelihood if they were going to be adding any units there at Island Creek.
So something that might be helpful to you to know, because I sat on the Island Creek 40B, what you can't see on the parcel, the assessor's parcel map.
Actually, could you go back? I'd like to take a look.
Is all the leaseholds, the lease, the very complic-, do you remember this? Very complic-, maybe you weren't even on this.
I wasn't on it then.
Scott was here.
I inspected a bunch of them.
Very complicated arrangement of leases that were executed because of the different pods of development that are on Island Creek. That's not all just like one project. So you'd have to undo these leases that essentially were written to make sure that, like, you had an indissoluble union, if you will. It's a lot more complicated than just, here's the parcel and here's the housing on it. It's actually the ownership interests that are intertwined through lease, lease and cross-lease agreements. It would be very difficult for somebody to build something on that site.
That, very interesting, Judy. I want to talk to you more offline about that. That would be, that's very helpful for us to understand.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, it was a little mind-boggling, the permitting process.
This is why we're doing this, talking to you folks about this sort of stuff. Thank you, Judy. Yeah, so next one, and then next one after that. So, yeah, so what's our strategy for compliance here? You know, we're creating a plan that complies with the law in case the lawsuit fails. You know, we're zoning the properties where existing housing, or where new housing would be very difficult or unlikely. You know, we'd, we want to maintain eligibility for the state money with the, you know, with the grants. And we want to avoid, avoid enforcement action here, you know, without creating new housing. And then if for some reason we were to pass this, but then in the future the law would be declared invalid, either through legislative process or through judicial process, you know, we could always go back, and we could respond if the town wanted to. We could do this by repealing the bylaw at a future Town Meeting to remove the, you know, the overlay districts.
I would just be a little careful with that line, because a smart property owner would file a subdivision plan or an ANR plan to freeze the zoning.
Ah, okay.
So just, you might want to be a little careful with that one.
Duly noted. Thank you, Judy. Yes, yep, appreciate that. What's next? Oh, gosh, I gave you an old version here. We've cleaned this up a little bit, so that's- So information sessions, we've got one next week, on next Wednesday, at the Merry Room at the library, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Please come. Please tell your friends, tell your family. We bring everybody out. We'd love to talk with you. And we'd like to get your questions. Yes. And then we've got another one during the day, the week after, on June 4th, from 1:00 to 3:00, same location. We've already had the Planning Board hearing on May 12th. And then, of course, we've got Special Town Meeting on June 16th at 7:00 p.m. So please come to that as well. So that's what's, that's what's coming up next. And next slide. And next slide, I think it's just a QR code, yes? Pull out your phones, get the QR code, that's where all our information is, so.
So, the Planning Board will make a positive recommendation at town meeting?
I, I-
I don't know if they voted yet, I, I-
Yes, we did vote at the hearing.
What is the Select Board's plan?
So, good question. They, you know, we've presented to them as well. You know, we've gotten positive feedback on what we're doing. It's, I believe they're state voted, or, or, I, I, I would expect, this is me expecting, this is me predicting, consume with caution. We've gotten favorable feedback from them. I, I would expect we'd get, we'd get a favorable response at town meeting.
Have you asked them for a vote of support?
We have asked them for a vote of support, yes, we have. Yes. So, but we'll, we'll see, we'll see what they say when it really matters. So, please, other questions, comments, suggestions? What do you like, what don't you like? We're listening.
I just want to, I just want to make a comment because I, this is the way I understood a lot of confusion that happened on the floor at the last town vote, and in case we're at that same doorway again. I'm grateful that they didn't pass it at the town meeting because it would have created a zoning nightmare for me because we wouldn't have been in compliance anyway. So, the thing I'm wondering about is, they're reviewing it right now, and we're hoping we get enough time to adjust this when we get to the floor. What if we don't?
What if we don't have enough time to, to make an adjustment? Well, good, good question, Jim. You know, my expectation is, if they do respond to us, and I expect that they will, we'll have a little bit more than two hours to make a, to respond.
I hope so, right.
So, yes.
I also think with MAPC doing the modeling work, am I correct that they did the modeling figure this time? I think it's a pretty low risk.
Oh, good, awesome.
Yes.
You guys did a great, I mean, it's a ton of work that you guys put into this.
This guy right here, who's on my left, Tag Carpenter, this is the guy, Tag's too, don't listen to Tag. He's being too modest. He's, he's the guy who's really driven the bus on this with the work group. He has been absolutely outstanding. There's no way we could have done what we've done without him, so.
So, one question you're probably going to get hit with, assuming you don't get ambushed like you were the last time.
Yep.
Somebody's going to ask about the schools, which, you know, should be shut down as a fair housing issue, but it won't be shut down in this town. So, you probably should be prepared to have an answer. I can tell you, a few years back, we asked the school department for a count of K through 12 students in our existing planned developments because that was the closest animal we had, you know, in terms of not being single-family. And there were 13 school-aged children in all the PUD units in this town.
Is that right?
None of them are age-restricted. So, you might want to just be prepared to have an answer to that question because it's probably, somebody's going to ask, you know, woe is me, our schools? It should be shut down, but it won't be.
Yes, yep, no, that, that's a good point, Judy. We, we did address that in part of our public outreach last year. You know, the enrollment in the schools have been declining
Right.
for, you know, for a number of years, so.
Right, but that, but this is going to wreck our schools, so just be prepared.
Yes, yep, and, you know, if you look at various studies that have been done, not here in Duxbury, but in, in other places, you see that, you know, they tend not to be occupied, you know, units that would be developed, that could be developed in a situation like this, they tend not to have a great deal, you know, a large number of children, school-aged children in them. It tends to be, you know, single individuals or, you know, childless families.
I would not be surprised if there are a fair number of kids at Island Creek. The population is different, it's a different, you know, deeply subsidized project.
Yes.
But our typical market rate, PUDs, and even our 40B homeownership developments, there are just not a lot of school-aged children. So, I'm not an advocate for bringing it up. I just want you to be prepared to answer it if it comes up because someone probably will.
I, I expect that'll be the case. We'll, we'll make sure that we have good, good data to share with them if it comes up.
Your stick has to be. We're hoping this, in reality, it's never going to be done.
That's the intention.
You got to push, you have to push, push, push that on these particular sites. It's unaffordable to do it on these, to buy them out, rip them down, and do it.
But you know what? I actually think that's the wrong way to go because I think the real claim here is, these are sites that are already disturbed. They already have multifamily housing on them. If there's more multifamily housing on these sites, what's the harm? It's a very different proposition from taking, you know, green space, you know, in a location, we don't want to argue about bounties, I didn't want to go there, but I mean, that's a different proposition from two sites that are already disturbed, already have higher-density housing.
Yeah, right.
So, if somebody can figure out how to add, you know, 25 units to the Village of Duxbury, or 25 units to Island Creek, who gives a fuck?
But not 300? I'll tell you who gives, is the people who are going to vote on this.
I understand.
I mean, if you want it to pass, yep, I don't know. You got to market it the right way.
So, so why is town council going into court saying that paper compliance is a bad thing to do? And that it's insulting to the legislature that works so hard on this law? I mean, where is this coming from?
Yep, good, good question, Judy. You know, when we look at what the work group, you know, we've been tasked with putting a proposal together here. And, but it's a very valid point, and it's going to come up. You know, what we're doing, so, these are really two parallel tracks that we're working on here, the work group and the, and town council. You know, what we're putting in place right now is a plan that if it's passed, this will allow us to remain compliant if our lawsuit is unsuccessful. So, that, that's really, you know, there's a lot more to it than that, but fundamentally, that's really the purpose of what we're doing here. The ideal, I think, if you, if you're, you know, looking at what the town truly wants, the town doesn't want any of this. I think that, that's, and so, that's really the purpose of the lawsuit is it's possible we might be able to get out of this entirely. That's not the focus of our proposition, that's the focus of the, the legal action. But, you know, in the event that that's not successful, this, I think, is the best plan that we could put forward that really does, you know, get as close as possible to what the town has expressed for their wishes.
Judy, do you remember, I think it was a time, pretty close to when I started here, that someone from Island Creek was proposing a multi-unit podium-style building in, in their space? Do you remember that? I remember sitting here at the meetings, and it got hostile. He withdrew it
Did you say?
because he wanted to change the entrance around and everything in there. Do you remember that?
Podium style? What does that mean?
Basically garage under.
Oh, oh, oh.
It's a style of construction, garage under.
John Keith, who owns all that property?
Yeah, you remember sitting here?
So, John Keith, at one time, was interested in trying to add units to Island Creek. This has been, you know, within the last 10 years or so.
Yeah.
There have been so many property management problems on, in that property that I think they kind of stepped back because it was very clear that the police and fire departments were going to have credible evidence that there's problems there. So, you know, Mr. Keith is also pretty old now, so I don't know-
I think he's actually stepping, stepping back back.
He probably is, I mean, that guy's-
He's probably what's on her airplane with him not long ago.
Which doesn't say much, so, I don't know that there's any more happening with that. We haven't heard anything for a long time.
Yeah, I was just curious, I remember that, it just keeps sticking in my mind about this.
Yeah, they, they had wanted to do, you know, another phase. But by then, the existing development, you know, was on the ground, and the problems that have happened there are pretty well-known.
There were a lot of people speaking out about it, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know.
So, is, so-
But that would be 40B.
Yeah, right.
But it's me this.
Yeah, which is outside the purview of what we're doing here.
I know.
But Judy, a question for you is, is Keith the actual owner of the ground? And is, is he ground leasing it to Beacon Communities who was the operator? Is that, is that the idea?
So, one of his children, as I recall, is now at Beacon Communities. And so, when he was doing the project that exists today, there was a process in place for Keith Construction's properties to gradually be transferred or, you know, conveyed. And in that case, I think it was one of his kids.
I see.
So, you're, it's a good point, but somebody's still got an interest, potentially, in trying to do some additional housing on that site. They're not going to use this law, they're going to use 40B.
Yeah.
I mean-
Right, because they could put a lot more units on it.
They can do a lot more.
A lot easier, right.
Why would they, you know, the only constraint, of course, is the wastewater plant, so.
That's a natural limit that you have to-
The wastewater plant's going to, going to tie them up.
Hold on, you can build bigger ones.
Well, I know, but it's a question of economics.
It's only money.
So, that's a fair question, I don't know. I'm going back in history, and I forget that people do get older and they actually retire.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Okay, thank you, Emmett, we appreciate this.
I have one question, not regarding this, and I'd like to put it on our agenda. And we have other, you guys are trying to do other things regarding, what I, what I said before, about the ADUs. I'd love you, one or two of you to come explain all of that to us.
Well, they're not dealing with ADUs, you mean the Planning Board, right?
But, right, but you're, you're-
I'm on the Planning Board, yeah.
Right, I'm looking at him as a planning board.
We're going to have a big discussion. We're, we're actually going to invite the Planning Board to meet with us
Perfect, I just want to be educated.
about a number of things.
I'm going to-
Perfect, I forgot about you.
ADU is the least of our problems right now. What went on in this room tonight is what we need to talk to the Planning Board about.
Okay.
I'm sick of that.
Mr. Chairman, we, we missed you, but I, I'm deeply appreciative of your, your sensibilities, yeah. Thank you.
Could you, during one of our meetings in admin or something, about-
Happy to talk about it.
I would love that. Do we have any, please, yes?
Yes, the first-
Well, what about application fees? Tanya did a really nice chart.
Nice job on this, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. I just happened to be at a zoning board hearing in, where was I? Easton, and they have a lovely planning director.
Oh, Stephanie?
Yes.
Oh, she's awesome.
I love her. Anyway, I asked her if she would share her, because she did this whole slideshow. So, I grabbed the information on the comparison of towns from her, and then just-
That's why it's all those towns. Okay, got it.
Yeah, I wasn't going around looking at everything else, so I didn't have the time to do that.
So, I took it from the chart you sent, that we're kind of light on most of it.
Yeah, most, most towns are. I mean, we haven't done anything since 2013.
What raise our, which is insane, I mean-
Well, it's the same with the water rates. We were doing this with the Water and Sewer Advisory Board. It had been 15 years, and now we're saddled with this, like, just make sure your toilets aren't running, because, oh my God.
So, the great challenge is-
Must be seven grand at a property.
You're supposed to reflect what our costs are.
Oh, I know, that's the-
And I don't know that there's a town in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that actually does that costing analysis, but, I mean, everybody's doing what Stephanie did, which is to look at what the surrounding towns are doing, and-
Yeah, and they raise theirs, so.
I agree that we, we should be looking at this. It's been a long time since we did any adjustment on these fees.
I, I went through this exercise with my department. My whole team, we went around every community. I proposed a 75th percentile based on surrounding communities, got in front of the-
Fiscal advisory.
Fiscal advisory, and they just were all over me. Like, how could you analyze it this way? Can't you break these down to man hours? I said, absolutely not, I'm not going to sit here and do that.
Yeah, but that's how it's supposed to be done.
Right, and, but I could, I can't do that.
I, I understand.
So, they reluctantly agreed to it, and then they got in front of the Select Board, and that began again, and then they just withdrew.
Yeah.
And I'm like, okay, am I going to go through that exercise again with them?
I thought we have a group trying to generate revenue, hello?
I had success this last, with the Board of Health.
You did.
Oh, good, nice job.
Well, your mailing costs, I mean, well, look at everything going up, up and up. I mean, these, I see some of these packets would have-
I know.
The unfortunate timing for us was at that time, you know, our permitting was so escalated through COVID, it was unbelievable. So, they were looking at those numbers, and I kept telling them, you know, it's very cyclical, you know, we're not in that same bubble we were in. But whatever.
Do you want us to pull together, build on this, and just look at the surrounding communities here on the Lower South Shore?
Absolutely.
I mean, I can arrange to have that done.
Yeah, that'd be great.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good job, thank you.
I'm glad you did this.
You're welcome.
That was a good idea.
Well, it just kind of sparked my memories, I was sitting there, I'm like, wow, that's a really good idea, so. And we don't have anybody else doing it, so.
What, what minutes do we have?
We have April 10th, 2025, Judith Barrett, Emmett Sheehan, Tanya Trevazan. That's it for that's here.
Motion to, about any discussion?
No.
Motion to approve the minutes as discussed?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
February 27th, 2025, Wayne Dennison, Judith Barrett.
I move to approve the minutes as drafted.
Second.
Was I there on that one?
Yes.
I was, okay.
And then the last is March 13th, 2025, Wayne Dennison, Judith Barrett. We just have you two, because Phil and Freeman were the other ones, so I guess we can't.
We'll, we'll hold those ones.
There you go, that's fine. Thank you, guys, are we done?
I'd like to move to adjourn.
Me too.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.